Chairman, second. All favorite eye? I just have to thank y'all. Who would like to start?
I mean, I guess we can just hand it over to them.
Jump right in?
Yeah.
Come on.
Alright.
Oh, we gotta do it up here so they can, because you're being screened. Screened. Is the mic on?
Mark, can you hit the button with the mic?
Alright, because you're on TikTok.
Alright, we go ahead and just hand those to him. This is just another copy of that same letter that we brought to you last month. We wanted to come back and just, again, ask for your support moving forward and transitioning from a part-time director for the Development Authority to a full-time dedicated director. When we had our leadership retreat in the spring, it became evident that that's what we need if we want to move forward with economic development in Jones County, the way that we see that it needs to. In order for us to be competitive in that, we are asking for that increase in funding. Currently, we're allocated from you guys, thank you, the $31,000 for salary for the part-time director. But at a part-time level, we really haven't been able to execute the trips to Atlanta, the involvement with GEDA, you know, recruitment of new industry and support of existing industry. I mean, I think she's done a fantastic job for a part-time status or period. But in moving forward, what's really necessary to execute all of those things effectively is a full-time position. So from the $31,000, we're asking for an increase of an additional 44 to bring us to 75, because we feel that would make us competitive with being able to attract the type of applicant that we're looking for, for that position. Of course, we would also like to be able to afford that applicant benefits as well. So we just kind of wanted to put that before you again, ask, give you the opportunity to ask any questions that you may have, so that moving forward, you would be able to take action on that and when you meet in July.
Any questions? Jackson, I'm gonna put you on the spot. You were at the last meeting. Listening to different options. And I made a comment to TJ that, you know, this board, we have to look at every option and make sure there is, you know. Can I tell you a number of times, we've come up here and people, oh, we're gonna need your help, going to find out, oh, you've got plenty. And, you know, so, not that y'all have plenty, but we just got to sure that, you know, funds needed, you know, we can, we gotta, we gotta account for it too.
So I would say, you know, right now, we, including that $31,000, we provide the Development Authority with $113,000 total per year outside of the debt service money that comes from SPOST. And so, right now, all of that's not being spent every year. But I think, you know, in fairness to a full-time executive director, you know, you have to believe that when, when that, when that comes around, when that person fills that spot, is there every day, those are sort of normal operating expenses that, that that person's gonna need. And so, you know, in terms of the current allocation, I think, I genuinely think that a good portion of that money that's going unused right now will be used, you know, going forward.
And I can also speak to some of that, too. So I got hired in October of 2019. Well, y'all know it wasn't long after that that the world shut down. So a lot of that money for GEDA and those trips and stuff, I wasn't able to spend for what it was allocated for, because they weren't having those things. So, but, I mean, going to Atlanta at least twice a month, Monroe County, their person went to Washington DC, I mean, there's lots of different things that need to be happening that a full-time person would be using that money for.
And so I think, you know, I think that's been, one of the topics of conversation is, you know, the unused current allocation. And, but I think once you, you know, get fully up and running, a lot of that will get used up. And then the other topic of conversation, I think, at the Development Authority meeting and maybe some here, was, you know, the fund, the fund balance, I guess, that the Development Authority has. And at that meeting, there was a conversation about wetlands credits and other things that the Development Authority is working towards, that maybe potential uses of that money that they currently have in savings, basically. And so, I don't know if y'all want to comment any on that. I think, you know, in talking to Tim, we've still got kind of a ways to go on that, but I guess, I don't want to speak for y'all, but I think that's kind of the current thinking of what to do with those funds.
Yeah, so we're hoping that eventually with the core and everything, that we'll be able to get what we need for the rail spur and then use that funds to go toward our wetland credits, because we need 14 of those. And they've gone up from what they were two years ago, and TJ can speak on how quickly they're disappearing, so.
Well, I actually just got off the phone. We got two projects. And so the one we're doing on the corner, we had to buy stream credits for down there, $170,000 something thousand dollars. And so we got another project, and we gotta buy a bunch of credits for anyways. They're disappearing. I mean, so we had to put a non-refundable deposit down today for another project we're doing. And so conference call last week, Army Corps Engineers, and, you know, they're kind of getting worried, because all these deals that are coming to Georgia are rivying on, and then kind of the supply flowers for them, you know, coming down, and there's several things being announced. And so, all these credits that's been created, they release so many every year, they're disappearing. And so, you know, I think our biggest problem is if we don't, you know, secure these credits, you know, they could be gone. So that's a whole nother world, most people don't live in that world, and, you know, some of that stuff, you just, you have no choice but to do it.
Do they expire, or like some of the other stuff we've done, you have to redo after so many years?
So, once we move dirt, so picking up a shovel and moving dirt, we're good for a good little while. And then until the project's finished, then we don't have to buy anymore.
Like, if you pay upfront for those credits, you own them. So like, we had to pay deposit on some credits, and, you know, by the end of the year, we gotta close it. If we don't, which is like buying a piece of land, if we don't close it, our deposit is non-refundable. But we close it, and then whether we start the project year one, year two, we still own those credits. And most people wait until it's time to do the project and buy the credits, but we're kind of living in a whole nother world right now, especially in Georgia. So I think, you know, the work the Development Authority's done in needing that spur for the rail, if you did have somebody come in, that will be our biggest problem, because we can't get the credits, and so.
And we also have some streams, if we are to utilize the whole entire part, that aren't even part of the rail part, that are on the, if you're looking at the part, it's on the far left side, that we're gonna have to do some stuff for as well.
So in our mind, that's sort of what our reserve funds are for, and in terms of that $113,000, it's kind of what we're looking at is our operational budget. So that's why it's necessary.
Because we don't get money from anything else. I mean, if we get grant money from Dry County, that's not a guaranteed thing. And then we got some money from the timber and stuff. But other than that, we don't have anything else that produces money to pay for any of that other stuff.
So are we saying we're gonna buy the, go ahead and get the wetland credits now? Or are we worried about if we don't have, if we don't move any dirt, by the end of the year, just say we don't get a project by the end of the year and we don't move any dirt, does that go away and we have to buy more credits? So in that case, it's, that's a tough, tough call, because you either buy them now and lose the money, or you don't buy them and lose the chance of getting the credit.
Well, I think if we, I think if we buy them, we don't lose them.
Yeah, we don't lose them, we just literally have to shovel dirt.
What we lose, what we lose is if we put a deposit down.
And don't pay it off by the end of the year.
Yeah, so that's, that puts us in a weird situation, because, you know, it's, you know, but I think we have to kind of move forward and at least, you know, explore that. But, you know, and I'm one of the ones on the board, like, you know, you want to check that box and have that ready to go, but if a project don't happen two years, do you want to go spend that money?
Right.
And, you know, it's tough to go spend that money when you don't have a project. And so that's, that's the gamble you always play. When you're a private developer, you gotta kind of say, well, we gotta cough it up and take our chances. Well, you know, as you all know, I ain't gotta preach it to the choir, you know, you gotta pick and choose your battles, because everybody needs money, and money goes everywhere, and it disappears very, very quickly. And so, you know, and that's one of the things I want to add to this. I think, I've looked hard into this, I try to, when I'm on these boards, and, you know, it's hard to manage what you got, much less when you're on these boards. But I look, when I'm on a board, I look at it like it's my business. And, you know, I pay taxes, and I, you know, paying more taxes, and so, and that's okay. But I try to make these decisions like I own that place. And, and I really do. And so I respect, you know, we come up here and we need money. Well, ain't, you know, you gotta, you need to make us explain why we need more money. And I respect that, because you got everybody screaming for money. There's not a big pot of money out there that you can just go and give everybody a bunch of money. That'd be, that'd be great, but we, we don't have that luxury. So, you know, you don't give it, everybody complaining. So we get that, too. I think all we want to do is send a clear message to you guys, and we've talked about it as a team, that we really believe that we don't have a bunch of money, because we've looked at it. The money that we have extras built up over a course of, you know, 10 or plus years, and we have, any certain thing could pop up and that'd be gone immediately. So what we don't want to do is come back at y'all all the time, because we think that's a bad idea. And so I think what this boils down to is, the salary portion, which is 30, we're asking for that additional, only because we think that's a, you know, right at that competitive level, and it's really not enough to get the horsepower that you need. And so I think that's the big decision, is, does this county, and if I'm sitting in your seat, this is what I'm thinking, okay, well, I got somebody over here that needs money, I got somebody over here that needs money, but, so if I, if I believe in economic development, my worry, if I'm y'all, is, well, I can go give that money, but are they gonna hire the right person? What is that person gonna be doing every day? Are they really gonna be out there earning that money? Is that investment gonna come back and help the county? Because that's really the only thing we can depend on. I mean, taxes are gonna continue to go up, but economic development's the only way for us to try to get out of that, other than, you know, balancing the budget and making sure we're responsible. But we know the price is never gonna go down on anything. It's gonna continue to go up, your decisions are gonna become harder. And so I think for us is, we gotta hire the right person. And I don't want to be in a huge hurry to do that, but I think we want to know that we have the tool to go and do that, is our biggest thing. So I don't think there's a, I was telling her, I don't think there's no, you know, pot of gold in a rainbow for us, we got a bunch of money sitting over here. I think it's, we really just need the money to hire somebody. And if the county is not ready to go that route, then that's okay, too. We don't think that's the best decision, but, but that's okay, we'll just deal with it however, the way we need to deal with it. And there's no hard feelings, I think it's more about us trying to do the right thing for the county, and what do y'all want us to do? Do y'all want us to go, may I interrupt something?
Okay, Salag, you got something you want to say?
Yeah, real quickly, appreciate everybody coming out. We did the salary study, did we include the executive director for the Development Authority? And if we did, what salary recommendation came back? And did we implement it? If we didn't, you know, that's something that we probably should have considered as part of the rules that we do fund. It's a no-brainer that we have to invest in that role, just because of, you know, the need for economic development in our community. More importantly, the investment we put into that part. If we left them out, that's on us, we need to fix that. But going forward, we need to have, like TJ and the rest of the crew said, we need to have somebody with some horsepower, some know-how, and that skill set to go in and do the rest of it. Everyone that has carried a torch to this point has brought us forward to a place where it's highly marketable, you know, we've been looked at for some projects, now we need to get over the finish line, because we're at the last 100 yards, and we have an opportunity. I think that there's a market, or not a market, but we're in the market, and there's a business that needs us, they just need to be made aware, and they need, you know, that individual that can close the gap for us. So for me, the $41,000, $30,000, that's a small price to pay for that role, because I've been around long enough to see it. We've increased some departmental roles, somewhere between 20 and 40K, depending on, you know, what position they were in, and that's one of those roles that, again, if we left out, we need to add money in. So to me, that's a no-brainer, let's make the investment. And I want to do the salary study part of it, go ahead, I think you might get frightened by what will come back. So I think the price that they're asking for right now is pretty easy to allocate.
And I also want to say that we've gotten several requests from the state for projects over the last two months. I mean, I've had two projects come in, our advice for two projects come in, so we're being looked at a lot more. We've put a lot more into marketing than we have in the past couple of years as well.
And that's, that's a lot going on right now.
Well, every time one of these sites disappear, that makes ours more valuable. Like Dillon Peach County, I was just looking at it a while ago, and Lanes, Lane Farm sold that, at $18 million. State of Georgia coming about it. I mean, just because they're having, they know what the economic forecast looks like. And so, yeah, I mean, is there a chance that we sit there for a couple of years and, you know, nothing happens? Absolutely. I mean, none of us, you know, can foresee exactly what's going on. But I would say that, as I said before, we're in the most opportune time right now for economic development, especially in Georgia, especially, you know, I look at that piece of property like, I would feel comfortable founding it for what y'all have in it. And it ain't the most popular thing for the county to be in the land business and development business, because it's just a draining process, but, you know, the facts is what you gotta deal with. That site will balance. And so people say, oh, it's up in the hole, you know, that site will balance from a factual standpoint, I've seen the numbers. The sewer is the biggest problem. That's the biggest problem we got. It's a big site, it's got rail, I mean, it's got that, you know, front is that goes to the interstate, straight to Augusta. I mean, there's, there's a lot of boxes checked on that site that does not worry me, that I think is a pro, big time. Our biggest battle is sewer and get somebody out there that can put that, you know, site on the map.
Somebody coming in there with the sewer would be a no-brainer.
Yeah, and you're thinking back in time, I mean, we could all sit here, and thinking back in time, I probably, if, before I bought that property, I would have figured that out to begin with, but that ain't what was done. So we're, we're just dealing with what we got, but we can't walk away from the property, we're committed to it. And so, I don't like spending money neither, but at this point, what choice do we have with to try to invest in that? And that's gonna be the, probably the greatest return on our money that we're spending. So it's hard to see that, but.
For me, it's exactly what you said, TJ, is we know the road to get there, and we know we gotta get on that road. To the point that you were talking about Peach County, and I've sat in meetings lately where I'm hearing, well, this land deal just went through, that one went through, and this one's on the verge, and this one went there instead of here, and I'm going, you know, y'all been in the same process with us since we've been on board and seen where we had what people called the boondoggle, the big money pit out there that nothing's ever gonna happen, and blah, blah, blah. Well, we've slowly gotten it to a point where now we're here and we're in the top five in the state with opportunities, we're being looked at, we're being this, we're being that, and I catch myself going, well, why is everybody else getting these projects and we're not? And I honestly believe it's because we hadn't marketed ourselves, we hadn't promoted ourselves like we have to. I mean, yes, we've got people in positions to check the boxes, but it's a relationship game, and we don't have everybody up there every day. We don't, I'm sure that the Peach County's had a lot of people talking this game up before it was actually a signed deal, we all know that. My only concern is, is the battle that we always have is being stewards of the money and knowing that we've gotta spend money, but it's gotta be in so many different places. Where's, where's the best bang for your buck?
I agree.
And I think this is, this is a no-brainer in spending the money. I do have a, my worry is, to me, is the benefits, not all positions have benefits. If, if it's a $100,000 position, it's just a contract for $100,000. So 75 and benefits, now you're talking at $100,000, $125,000 package.
Well, that was one of the things that we have looked at, too, is maybe we fund the benefits, they're our own money, and we've talked to a couple of different insurance companies about doing something like that, so we're not necessarily asking for that if that's a deal breaker.
Well, I do think that, honestly, I think the benefits would be, it would be better for them to be on account of benefit, because we get a better bang for our buck, if they're our employees, I would think. I'm just wondering if there's a, if there's a happy medium where, I know there's some money in the bank that we, we know there's knowns coming up in the future. If we look at it on, say, a five-year basis, where, because our, all of our, I think all of our anticipation is to get somebody in that park to bring this revenue in. So if we look at, okay, will this, the pot of money sustain us for five years if we approve this with, I'm just gonna say 50,000-plus benefits, a $25,000 a year out of that bucket for five years, knowing that if we get development in there, we're gonna have to have sewer, and then we gotta revisit it, because now we're sustaining an active program. Because honestly, I mean, the blunt way to put it is, at this point, the county's funding everything to get to the opportunity to have a viable return.
Right, right. And, and you know, another thing, just while we're, while we're sitting here, I mean, I was thinking, you know, if we had a person in our role, what would I be saying? And that's just something that one of us could do, but, you know, if somebody's up there in Atlanta, you know, basically in the loop, and it's not that hard, I mean, right now, what's going on, you know, hey, governor's office, we seen you bought that land, we got something that's just like it, we'll take 18 million. I mean, you know, if they're buying these sites, that may be, we may want to consider that. I mean, and so I say all that to say that, and I'm serious when I say that, I mean, they're out there buying these sites, and I can name several other ones, and, and they're paying $18 million, and they got a deal on it. And they're, they're looking at this like they got a deal on it. And, but we got what, I don't even know what we have in that site, you know, all-in, I don't know, paid, three or four million dollars, maybe we got total with everything?
We got part of that.
Do we?
Happy to pay for all the site work we've done, how much the bond was, all payments we paid off.
But I would think, too, that we could, you know, if it, if it come down to it, I would think it, you know, and at some point, it may be better for the state on the property. That puts us in a good position. I mean, it gets us out of debt, and, you know, all we do is provide the incentives. But, you know, we do, we need somebody working it. I think it's a good asset, we just gotta do a better job of being out there on top of it. But I do feel comfortable with, you know, where we're at, and so.
And the other thing, too, about making it a full-time person, and this being the only thing they're doing, is this is the only thing they're doing, they're not trying to balance chamber and all that that comes with that, they're doing this and nothing but this.
And we don't want to just focus on that part.
No, we want to focus on the whole county.
Yeah.
We had this conversation with Oak Clinton about a week ago. You weren't there, but I was getting my rear end handed to me, and I looked at him, I said, well, y'all got to realize, each and every one of y'all sitting here owns this park. And I said, I've never seen anybody with a negative attitude ever accomplish anything or succeed. And I said, I see all these negative attitudes, and I'm looking at you like, maybe that's why you have it. I wanted to say that, maybe that.
Well, if you saw the world problems, go to Oak Clinton Gangs.
They'll do it right there. But I just told him, I said, what y'all need to do is have a positive outlook, because negative ain't gonna make it here. And it was just, I gotta think, no, no, we do what it's gonna take to make this a positive, you know, outcome.
Right. Well, and this county's got, I mean, we've, we've gotta be looking down the road, I mean, because we're, you know, I don't know, if you think about 10 years, we're still in the same situation.
No, we gotta do it now.
I mean, we got, I think we got some major problems that we're not facing that we look 10 years down the road. And I think economic development is our only way out, and, you know, that part, being out there and being developed and having a thousand jobs and creating some, some income for this place, it's not gonna hurt, you know, this part of the town, and it's not gonna hurt Jones County. That's a great place for it to be. People may live here and eat here, but, you know, that's not a bad place to have it. You don't want it in the middle of everything. It's not gonna change everybody's lives. So if it's in a perfect world, it's kind of located in the correct place.
For them and us, for, for the state, for the developers and for us.
Yeah. But the issue, the issue, too, that I'm concerned about, we get somebody in there, and if you land a big deal, then money solves everybody's problems.
That's right.
But we're still battling with the rail access. Okay, we can get that solved, but then it's, it's the sewer. And so, you know, Dennis, like, we got a whole nother leg over here, we gotta go handle sewer, we can run it through, you know, we've already got some of those plans, and it's also hard to go spend all that money. So, you know, we're also waiting on the big, the big thing to fall out of the sky.
Yeah, but if we have a $4 billion project come in, I don't, I don't, I hope that y'all whip that and I put water and sewer out there.
No, I think with a known there, with the money invested.
Right. Well, that would, that would put us in the sewer business that we definitely need to be into right now. And, and what was nice is, is that one site, not only would put us in the sewer business there, but it would.
All over the county.
But, you know, what we've got in the county that we're currently paying, you know, Make-A-War Authority, you know, it's a five-year plan, we've already got a, you know, we've got the customer base there.
Well, the project that big would probably put Jones County in the sewer business, but if we, Make-A-War Authority probably gets some of it, too. You talk about a lot.
Yeah.
It's not that big.
Yeah, you know, we got to do it, I mean, that's just a no-brainer, this was the right time, and.
Jason, I don't know if this is an easy one to answer, or how I would answer it. From a business standpoint, looking at Development Authority, is there a, is there a healthy fund balance that we've grown from over the last five years, taking everything that we need to take into account, that we feel comfortable pulling this much out and still leaving a healthy fund balance, to, to do some of this with, so that it's not, because my fear is, we're putting all our eggs in a basket that I agree to put them in, because we know we gotta, we gotta hatch some chickens. But if we hatch the chickens, and all of a sudden, we gotta build coops around everything, that's, that's something we gotta use, we gotta go in debt for and pay for with the revenue we got coming in. So then we're, we're still, we're, we're behind the eight ball the whole time. And it all depends on landing the right prospect out there. And we all agree and hope, I think we all hope, but we also agree that if we don't do these things, we know we're not gonna land it. If we do them, we got a really good chance of landing it. But until we land it, you know, we're, none of us are feeling really comfortable.
I mean, this is step one right there, and as far as the, building a coop around the chickens, you know, you talk to everybody that's been there, done that, and they'll tell you right quick, the return on your investments, pretty quick.
Well, it's easier to build a coop when you got a bunch of chickens.
Yeah.
It's not easy to build it when you just got empty yard out there.
It's easier just to have chickens.
Yeah, you don't really need it. But, but right now, we're saying if we build a coop, a lot of people bring us some chickens, so.
Well, and so, to kind of end, I think that we need that person, and we need a bad, and, but if that's not what we're able to do, then we'll deal with it. But we believe that that's what we need, and we, we know there's not a lot of money, we went through that, and honestly, there's just not a lot of money. And so that, that addition would kind of check that box, help us hire that right person. But I also think that there's a whole nother conversation to be had of how maybe we can not have that burden of so much debt. I just don't know that that's what the county needs to be in. The county needs to be given incentives and having that out there available, but I don't know that we need to be in a lot of debt for land. I mean, if we were to not be in debt, and then we just pay somebody X amount a year that could go handle that property, or some gray highway stuff, or whatever kind of economic, that's a better position for the county to be in. And then, then it's kind of a win, because you got somebody out there working on it, whether it's the state or whether it's a private person. We're out of debt, but the only thing the county brings to the table is, you bring us a project, we'll give you the incentives. So we just control the incentives, which they need, we need them, they need us. And that's a win, because the citizens look at that and say, well, that's a pretty smart idea. I mean, you know, this, this big burden that we've been talking about for years, now somebody's come in and took over the debt. I mean, I think everybody liked that model, if it were to work.
And we've had somebody come, you know, a few years back, but I don't think they had the, I don't think they had, I don't think, what the hell, what they needed to do to back up.
Well, and, and the problem with, I think they've always, just like what's out there now, or what was out there. But that wasn't, they'll never do nothing. That wasn't, they'll never give them no substantial amount of jobs, it wasn't, I mean, that park is a, is a big project park. And if we, and if we sell it for any less than that, then we're just under-valued. And that product, we don't need somebody coming in and eating 100 acres. I mean, I hate to turn people down, but that's a, that's a big project park, and when you start carving it up like that, that land shouldn't have never gave away. That, that wasn't a big, big problem for us. That, that wasn't a big, big problem for us. So, just my two cents.
That's, that's.
But I came on when all that was going on and we, we gave the land up and the guy shut it down. That ain't what we're looking for out there.
That's valuable two cents there.
I like the idea of, you know, state or a private entity coming in and, and taking it over, and that way we can, we can do just like you said.
I mean, and we would only do that if it was somebody for economic development. We wouldn't just go sell the land and say, oh, we hope you come back, because I'm not talking about that, I'm saying a partnership where they buy it for X and they go invest the money and figure out all these problems that, you know, county sometimes ain't the best to go figure out all these development problems. I mean, it just takes too many boards and too many boats and ten years down the road, you ain't got nothing done, so y'all know about that.
The only thing that's scary about that though is once we sell it, we may not have control over what they put there if we give it to the state. We can have stuff on contracts, but.
Well, I think you have a, you know, devils in the details, I think you have a, a, a ten-year deal, you couldn't hold somebody to, to own it forever and never do nothing with it. But, um, like I say, perfect partner would be the state with it, because they can do whatever they want to. They come in and they want to do a project, making water authority can't tell them nothing, they gonna come in and say, all right, this is what we're gonna do. I mean, they, they solve those problems that we can't solve, so they would be a, a perfect partner for us. And get us out of debt and we gotta pay them. We can find someone to do that money handling.
Commissioner Wood, any questions or comment?
A lot of good points here, I like the idea of bringing somebody on because if you're not marketing it, you're not telling the world about it. So, I'm in favor of it, I know we can't make a motion now, but at appropriate time, we need to.
Is that on the next agenda?
Okay.
Okay, yep, I see it right there.
You got the other questions for others?
I will invite y'all next Tuesday, workforce developments meeting at, uh, Chinesco, did they work tonight? Ten o'clock at Chinesco, uh, Clubhouse, I'd love for y'all to come over there and meet them and, I think you've already talked to Darryl, haven't you?
I have, but I didn't know about any next week, so.
Yeah, well, we've, we've got a meeting here in Jones County Tuesday, and I'd love for y'all to come and, and pick the brain, you know, Darryl, Brian, just figure out what we can, you know, Justin and I talked to him the other day to see if, you know, if there's any lead there, because there's, there's opportunities there. Whether it fits a category that they've got, uh, yes or no, but, um, it's a tool that we can use. And supposedly Jones County got nineteen on the program right now. And I'm, I got one I'm calling next week just to see how it's worked out for them.
Yeah, I know we have a couple, like, high school students that are.
Right, but if you can make that, and I, have you, have a bunch of questions ready?
All right, you got it.
I got it.
Hey, is this the old family agenda?
For this work session.
For this work session.
And we got another work session, uh, with the regular meetings. You got anything else you want to talk about?
Well, yeah, I mean, while we're here, y'all can try to not use up too much time, I'm just thinking about things that are important, if we don't get a chance to talk on the development authority. So if that person's in there and obviously they're out there marketing the property and at the state, we're kind of holding them accountable to take, go, go figure out this for us. And so, I think a, a part of that too is just other economic development areas and particularly gray highway, like I talked about last time. So, you know, there's a good bit of land on gray highway and, and I, like I said last time, that's kind of where you get your base hits from. And so, I think figuring all that out of how we could do that because it's, you know, pretty much in Macon, close to the interstate. And so there's some users that would, I think, love to be there, um, that'll be coming down the road. But taking that and working that, but also having that person work with the whole, you know, sewer plan. And so can we, can we work to get a, a plan for sewer on the shelf? Because we, we've been working on that a little bit, and the county's been working on that a little bit. But can that person kind of help push that agenda to where, let's get a plan on the shelf to, let's run sewer here, run sewer here, and here's how we pay for it. And then let's get some industrial stuff on gray highway and, and kind of check it off our, our list too. Because that may be a way of, if nothing happens, you know, soon, then, you know, then it's another decision, all right, do we want to go in the, the sewer business? Because I, I think it's just a matter of time before we, we have to do some of that to, to, in order to have development. But I think that's some things that, that they should be working on, I'm, I'm guessing y'all are okay with, think that's a good plan?
Yeah, we've.
I saw this person working just on that development.
Yeah, now, we've, we've, we've actually talked about sewer a lot lately, you know, um, and, and I think Tim's been working on, on a good plan for how do we get there from here? Meaning, where do we start? Do we start at Joel Cliff and Gray Highway and go both ways? Do we start at Macon and come towards Gray, do we start in Gray and go towards Macon? But we know that the opportunities are on the corridor, and I believe it also goes right back to what you said about, that's a good spot for it. Because you got people that wanna keep our hometown feel, but Gray Highway's already kind of established to a, a business district. And I think people will be more amenable to a business going in along Gray Highway than anywhere else other than the industrial park. So, uh, I think that's a no brainer, and I think we figure out how to get the sewer on that or the, the small wins along there to help build the plans that we've got for the sewer. Because, you know, we, we know, you know, from Gray Highway, you go straight out to, you know, reservoir or go back over to forty-nine area with our sewer, so.
Yeah, I think on, on sewer, we, when the state released the, the state ARPA money, um, we submitted two applications, one was for water and one was for sewer. We ended up getting three point nine million on the, on the water side, on the sewer side, there was some issue between the regional commission and the state, they, they said we submitted our application and then we drew it and didn't resubmit it or something. I, um, I think at that point, they got so many, they were just looking for a reason to kick it out. And so, so our sewer application ended up not getting reviewed. But there's supposed to be a second round of that. And so, just sort of internal discussions and with Tim, you know, we've talked about, when they opened up that second application window, we want it to be, so, you know, we'll, we'll resubmit our, our sewer information there. And it included a treatment plan and some collection lines, so. And we, and we've talked about expanding that a little farther to, to maybe include, uh, you know, neighborhoods in, in the county that are having specific issues and that type of thing. Because we know there, there's some of those out there and we know that would be customers, you know, a good customer base to start with, so.
I guess the only good thing is, uh, Sam, maybe price goes on way down, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I quit holding my breath on that one, but yeah.
Tell me he's saying he's going to go back down after something went up.
Better girls gonna fix that, ain't it?
Any other comments or questions? A good work session, I think, so I'm looking forward to making this thing happen.
So it's on our agenda for tonight, so.
For tonight?
O business.
Yeah.
So I was just, I was just being back on my frugal list here, uh, so she said we talked about potentially paying for the benefits. What does that look like as far as dollar amounts and can we, can we reduce something here? I just, for, for me, and we talk about seventy-five plus benefits, um, we're at department head level or higher. So that's the highest level we pay anybody else in the county. You know, that, that's a tough one, um, for a, for something that we didn't have possession last year. Just, just thinking that through, how we, how we, I don't, I don't want to cause morale issues, I don't want to call inequities in pay, pay scales and stuff like that. Thinking as long as, you know, but I, I definitely want everybody to know that this is not whether we think we should do it or not, this is a given, it's a must. I mean, it's gotta be done.
Would it be a consideration, Sam, or maybe make it a little more ease if it were, the county was just paying the employer component of that and allowing the employee, the director, the opportunity to, to purchase that package just like a, a regular employer's do? They, they play just the employer part, not necessarily the employee's component, so it, you know, would offset.
I think that's what we do anyway, right?
I'm sorry, I thought you had made reference at, at some point to it being the whole thing in terms of cost and it looked like it was inclusive of both. And I just wanted to clarify that, that wasn't necessarily our expectation, we were just asking for the employer component.
The numbers I sent you, I think, included both, it may have been split out there if you found them, but.
Did you send her the old ones or the new ones?
The new ones. Yeah, so I, I think, you know, sort of to you, your question, and then, and I guess this plays into it, how much do you want it to look like a county, a Jones County Board of Commissioners position? And then, or should it look more, I mean, it's a position independent of Jones County Board of Commissioners, it falls under the Development Authority. I don't, I don't know, I don't, I don't know if we're gonna draw parallels to our existing positions or not, since it is, you know, a separate entity.
I would think it had to be, you know.
Yeah, I mean.
Separate.
Yeah, yeah, uh, on the, on the benefit side of things, we could, we could just figure out what the employer contribution could be and basically provide that to you in the form of return and get back to it. So it wouldn't give you that money, right?
So, so that might be the conversation.
You, you would allocate that to us to then purchase from you, so you're saying, to, to, for us to sponsor the employer component?
Thinking about that though, if they're not a county employer, it's not, they're not gonna be able to be on ACCC employer, I mean.
No, that's not right, we have two judges that are.
Just hold on, Shannon, that's why she tells me, just hold on, Sam.
She straightened you out real quick.
I'm used to it, I'm okay with it.
That's what we pay for, keep him straight, keep us straight.
We have two that are not employees that we have on our insurance right now.
Well.
They're judges, so we have. So, they pay, they pay their part to us.
So the.
Levine sends them an invoice.
The employee pays their part to us, so that's probably what we do is we just pay the whole cost and then the executive director will pay his or her part to, direct it to us.
That makes me feel better because it's not seventy-five thousand plus twenty-six percent of that salary benefits that we're paying.
And it varies a lot if it's family coverage or if it's individual coverage, that, that cause, that number could fluctuate by, you know, thousands of dollars depending on what, what type of coverage they, they want, if any.
But that's dependent on the person in the position, so.
Right, but then they would pay their, the family portion of that too, yeah, but their home money is still higher.
Yeah.
Is there anything else?
I think I'm good, huh, Chairman?
If we get a motion to, to adjourn our work session for a quick break before we have our second one, you want to?
Motion to adjourn, second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank y'all.